Welcome, everybody. May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Some move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Tonight, we start with our technology update. Do you want us to go down and sit here? Are you going to have a slideshow?
I have a slideshow.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening. I'd like to start with a little quote from Bill Gates. That "Technology is just a tool in terms of getting the kids working together and motivating them. The teacher is most important." Not beautifully written, but it does get the point across. Courtesy of Bill Gates. Every year, I do a technology update for the school committee, and I cover what we have accomplished this year first. This year, as far as infrastructure, which is everything that is behind the walls and makes the network run, we were able to complete the installation of wireless access points to provide 100% wireless coverage campus-wide. That's internal coverage. It does not include ball fields and things like that. This was funded in part by E-Rite. We added new switches and something called a primary domain controller. It's a computer that controls the log-on information. It's kind of like the brain of the network. We added phones to new and existing classrooms and replaced a main switch for the CPS and NHS classroom phones to take care of some hardware failures that we had. We replaced aging file servers with a virtual server configuration. Virtual server is a very large computer that's divided up into different file server names. So instead of having individual computers for a file server, we have one big one and a lot of smaller ones dividing it up. Kind of like an apartment building of file servers. I also moved the central office to First Way in collaboration with Diane O'Neil, and this included relocating existing computer equipment, reconfiguring the network wiring, and some equipment over there. As far as classroom technology, we went one-to-one at the middle school in grades six, seven, and eight, as you are aware, and the technology department, in collaboration with the middle school, acquired and distributed Chromebooks to all of the students. We provided Chromebooks for high school teachers and TAs. As they began to use Google Apps for Education more and more, we felt it necessary to provide them with their own device that they can have for themselves to take home and work on the technology. I added four Chromebook carts at the elementary school. Flat panel smartboards to eight classrooms at the high school and three classrooms at the middle school. And we took away projectors and laptops on carts at the elementary school in the kindergarten classrooms and added short throw projectors. This eliminated wires and things like that on the floors that the kids were in danger of tripping over, so we did that down at the elementary school. And I upgraded the regular desktop computers at both the elementary school and high school computer labs with new equipment. The Aspen Student Information System, all leftover tasks from the previous year's implementation were completed, and I will cover this in a little bit more detail later on in the presentation. For online assessments, coordinated the technology and staff training for Park for grades three through eight. The new online version of Access for grades four through 12 ELL students. And we coordinated the technology for MAP at the middle school, which has been happening for several years, and a pilot at the high school. As far as the building project is concerned, we rerouted cross-campus fiber to replace wire that was running directly through the middle school construction zone. This cross-campus fiber connects the elementary school and the First Way office building. We also upgraded or are going to be upgrading our core fiber switches. I put that on this year's presentation because it's actually an FY16 project that can't be completed until July, but it is part of this year's project. And reviewed the bids for the audiovisual equipment for the middle school and intermediate school, and that includes the interactive projectors, sound enhancement system, and document cameras. Diane and I are working on expediting that right now. As far as classroom support, this is a major focus of the technology specialists. They provide individual coaching, small group professional development, and large group professional development for our various technology tools in the district. We obviously provide hardware and application support in the classrooms as well, and they assist the technology integration specialist teachers at the elementary school and the middle school. Google Apps for Education continues to be very popular, and the use expands every year at the school district. And it actually has expanded beyond the classroom where administration in some of the schools is using it to communicate with their staff, which is a great thing. They use Google Classroom to communicate with their staffs. Can be used on any device and anywhere, which is one reason why it's so popular. Social media and multimedia. And flipped classrooms, hybrid teaching, all of that continues to be growing at an exponential pace. This expanding dependence on Internet-based applications requires that the technology department continuously monitors and assesses the physical network to make sure that we can provide these resources seamlessly to our teachers and students. Balancing student safety and privacy is a continual process and a challenge. Our goal, you know, we have to balance that with the compliance with existing laws and our student safety and security. Our goal is to, you know, allow for creativity, exploration, discovery, and the mastery of emerging technologies without compromising the safety and privacy of our students. And that's a really, it sounds a lot easier said than done. There's a constant push and pull, and we're constantly trying to balance this to make sure that students have adequate access to what they need, and teachers have access to the tools that they need, and we also provide a safe environment for our students to learn. Good old online assessments. For Park testing, we did the same thing we did last year. We used a one-to-one model. My staff provided technical support and staff training for staff of test administration, and they collaborated directly with the CPS Assistant Principal and NES Associate Principal for planning and administration of testing. It went pretty smoothly this year. The access testing for ELL students moved to an online format this year for grades four through 12, kindergarten through grade three state on paper-based testing, and this was a collaboration with the Director of ELL, Jeremiah Sblane, and I'm sure he'll talk a little bit about this later on in his presentation. MAP testing continues at the middle school, and we coordinated the technology needs for the test administration, and as I mentioned before, we piloted it this year at the high school, and I believe we're going to continue that next year. Different types of technologies that we use. At the top of the list, of course, is mobile technology. I mentioned that we went one-to-one with Chromebooks at the middle school, grades six to eight. We're still using shared carts at the elementary and high school, and we're going to continue using that model at the elementary school. iPads continue to be used for special ed and elementary school students. Our younger students respond very well to the smaller device, the touchscreen, and the interface. It's very conducive to the younger students. Laptops are used for our smartboards and also in the elementary school for classroom stations, so we still use traditional laptops in our classrooms. Traditional computing means desktop computers, and they're still around. We have three computer labs moving forward. They're used for word processing, printing, graphic arts, CAD/CAM programming, and creating multimedia documents. They do remain a staple in our computer labs and our administrative offices, and they will continue to do so for at least the near future. IMACs are in here because they are a desktop computer, and they're used for specialty activities for art, photography, and music. We have an IMAC computer lab downstairs here on this floor. And smartboards. The interactive whiteboards continue to be popular. Even with our transition to one-to-one computing, teachers and students like to use them for presentations, lectures, and group activities with students. Next is the infrastructure piece. This is the dry piece, so I put a lot of pictures of children on these slides. We currently have about 490 desktop computers. And as I say "about" because we are continually cycling out old equipment and moving new equipment in, so that might shift by, you know, five or six devices, you know, periodically. 381 laptops, 98 iPads, and 1,067 Chromebooks and 121 smartboards. If you look at this chart, I go back to FY11 for what we currently have in use, and it's just a chart version of what I just showed you, and I'm going to show you, actually spreadsheet. We have over 2,000 district-owned computing devices on our network. That does not include our printers, and it doesn't include staff devices that are brought in and put on the network, and it doesn't include the BYOD devices for the students at the high school. So I think this illustrates to you how large our network really is and how much we've grown exponentially over the past five or six years. This is just a chart showing you that same information. As you can see, the Chromebook line is much bigger than all of the others. And this shows you device acquisition by year. The turquoise are the Chromebooks, I'm sorry, the purple are the Chromebooks. The turquoise are total devices. So if you look at FY13, the desktops, which are the darker blue, were, you know, about 2/3 of what the Chromebooks are. If you look at FY12, they're a little more even. FY11, a little more even, but if you look at FY14, I'm sorry, I was looking at the wrong line. If you look at FY13, the desktop computers, which is the very far-left blue bar, are desktops, and the little purple one down there next to the turquoise one are Chromebooks. And then jump to FY15, you'll see that shift is completely opposite, and the Chromebooks have shot ahead. One of the reasons is our one-to-one computing program. They're very cost-effective, and they're very easy for the students to use. We provide professional development. This year, the technology department focused on Aspen training, on training for Google Apps for Education, training and support for our online assessments, and School Wires, which is our new website application that we'll be launching this summer. This is not an example of everything that goes on in our schools and our classrooms. There is a lot that happens during the extended workdays and during other professional development days. There's just so much more that's what's happening that we can't possibly list all of it. This is our major professional development that where we brought in people from the outside to work, that the technology department brought in to work with staff and students. Of course, we have administrative functions, and this is where I'm going to go into a little bit on the Aspen Student Information System. We continued and completed the implementation of all of the modules. There are a few odds and ends in the health module and the sped module that we had to tie up this year. We engaged in report customizations, report cards, the sped workflow, and a couple of other things this year. We opened up the parent portal, wildly popular. We added assessment data, the Park assessments, MAP testing, Access, MCAS, and I think SAT data is all in Aspen for students and parents to look at and access. I also sent Joanne Johnson, my database person, to advanced training so that she can begin to provide some in-house programming, and we don't have to continue to go out for contractors to do our report customizations. And one thing I needed to say, and I forgot to bring it with me, is Joanne received the Aspen Small District of the Year Award at the Aspen Institute in April, to which she attended along with Kristen Holgate at the middle school, Laura Raimo at the high school, and Jane Melville at the elementary school. And as Joanne says very eloquently, the award wasn't just for her. It was for the whole district and all the hard work that everyone did to make this a success, especially the three administrative assistants that accompanied her on this trip to the institute. They did a lot of work to get this running. We always do data collection and reporting. This gets smaller every year because the SIMs, EPIMs, and SES data collection has become more automated every year. It's automatically uploaded by the state, and we receive validation reports, and it's usually done on a daily or every couple of day basis throughout the year, so staff can keep an eye on the accuracy of the data continuously rather than all at once at the end of the school year. Doesn't mean there's any less work to do, it's just spread out a little more. And our primary reporting occurs in October, March, and June at the end of the year. October is the big report that's tied to the foundation enrollment funding. Looking ahead, I've been able to increase one of my technology specialist positions to a 12-month 1.0 FTE. This will give me support for the summer for my data activities. So it's the person that does all the data work. We are going to be launching one-to-one Chromebooks at the high school. We are going to continue the one-to-one program at the middle school and refresh grade six. That will be an annual refresh at the high school. The refresh for the Chromebooks will shift a little bit as we move the program up in grades. We're going to go online for parent insurance payments for the Chromebooks. Last year, we sat at a desk in this room with four or five people collecting cash and checks from parents for the Chromebook insurance, and then we deposited the money in the bank and sent it out to the insurance company. This year, we're going to be using MySchoolBox. It's the same program that parents use to pay for their cafeteria program, NutraKids, sorry. So any parent who's already using MySchoolBox to pay for NutraKids is going to be very familiar with the program. It's seamless, and we'll be implementing that this summer. We're launching School Wires, new website. We're going to show you a little bit of that in a moment. We're going to give you a sneak preview. We're going to be adding Chromebooks and iPads at the elementary school. I have a few smartboards going in at the high school and middle school. Some of them are new, some of them are replacements for aging equipment. Middle school expansion, we're going to be providing new phones, laptops, and the AV equipment is coming in through the building project for that. I'm upgrading the core network. What does that mean? Okay. For the past couple of years, we've been replacing wireless access points in the classrooms. Well, when you replace a wireless access point, you have to plug it into something, and you have to plug it into a switch. Switches are in closets. So we've upgraded all of that, all of these switches and all of these access points, but they all run back to a single point of termination on the network and out to the Internet. So this year, we're looking to replace and upgrade our firewall and our primary core switch. We call this switch Queenie, and Queenie is going to be retired, and Queenie 2 is going to be coming on site. We're also going to be putting some fiber between some closets because we have some bottlenecks happening between the server room and one of our primary closets. So that's what's happening next year for network infrastructure. You're not going to see it, but you're going to see better performance. We are going to be developing and implementing an online student registration module at Aspen sometime next year. It's probably not going to be ready for August, but it will be happening. And of course, the intermediate school building project is going to be going on all of next year, culminating in the opening of the building next September. And I'm going to close with another quote from a gentleman called Dave Warlick. He's a retired ed tech teacher, blogger, author, and public speaker at organizations like ISTI. And I'll read it, even though it's redundant. "We need technology in every classroom and in every student and teacher's hand because it is the pen and paper of our time, and it is the lens through which we experience much of our world."
Thank you, Karen. Are you going to give us a sneak preview of the new website now?
Do you want to ask questions first, or do you want to do the sneak preview?
We can ask questions. Find anybody?
So riveting.
Well, I'm wondering how many staff members you have throughout the district? Do all of this work? This is a lot.
I have four that report directly to me, and we have one part-time network administrator who is under the facilities umbrella but also does work for the technology department. That position's part-time. I have one full-time year-round technology specialist, two, which is the hardware and application and support person. I have two 10-month technology specialists, two people, one of which is retiring, and I am in the process of hiring a replacement. And then I have just increased my technology specialist one, which is Joanne Johnson, to a 12-month position. So it's a total of four people, two 12-month, two 10-month, and myself.
Serving over 250 people.
That's incredible.
They do a good job.
They do.
Not to mention students.
Thank you.
I guess I have one question. Earlier this year, when we were particularly in the middle school implementing Google Classroom, there was some talk about Google Classroom logins for parents, and I think that that hadn't yet been developed by Google. Is there an update on that?
I apologize, I do not have an update on that.
That's okay. I know it's a little bit outside of the scope of what you're talking about today, but something I experienced. Thank you so much, Karen. I have had the pleasure of being in this committee for long enough to see that growth and expansion in our technology, and I'm continually impressed with how seamlessly it all operates.
Thank you.
So thank you to you and your team.
They deserve a lot of credit.
Thank you, Karen.
My question's very general. What is it that Chromebooks bring to the table?
Okay. A Chromebook can be thought of kind of like Google's version of an iPad with a keyboard. It looks like a small laptop computer. It is integrated with Google and Google Apps for Education because the operating system is the same one that your Android device would use. Well, it's a version of that. They're very inexpensive, they're very fast, and they're very easy to use. So those are really the advantages, is that it's integrated with Google Apps for Education, and it's very cost-effective. It is not a complete laptop. We don't pretend it is, but it's a device that we can afford to give to a lot of our students because of the cost, the price point. But it also is very useful for them, and the management of them by my staff is also very easy to do, right through the, there's a dashboard in our Google. The applications that are used in Google Apps for Education look just like Gmail and Google Docs, but it's all in one umbrella, and it's completely integrated with the devices.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just one other question for a moment, actually. I don't know if this necessarily falls under your range, but education for parents, so parents can stay as involved as possible in their day-to-day lives, you know, in their children's, students' day-to-day lives and activities at school. I think it's really important that we keep our parents informed. I know that my daughter has a Chromebook, and there's definitely a learning curve for parents as well. And I'm wondering what we can do as a district to help get the parents educated as well as our students, teachers, staff members?
That's a good question and a good idea, and it's something maybe we will, you know, look into in collaboration with the building principals, of course.
Okay. Thank you. That's it. Thank you so much, Karen. Do you want to, will you be able to show us a sneak preview of the website?
Yep.
Please, thank you.
Let me just exit out of here. I just want to log out of Google Drive so I don't forget and leave myself logged in forever.
Okay. I'm going to move over a little bit to give Logan some room. Well, you click on, and these are the first things you're going to see. You're going to go to your regular URL, to your www.nps.org, and that's what you get at first. These pictures we can change. These are things that I thought looked great and sort of encompassed Nantucket and, you know, a little bit of Whaler stuff and the lore of the island. And then this is the district page. The schools all fall into their behind-the-scenes of these and the schools, so every school can put any pictures they want on there that are connected to the school. So here's the first thing. We, I have to say, it goes back three years, three years or so, when this first percolated up with the PR committee and asking about a website. Jen Eller was part of that, John Rieke was part of that, and a few other people, and talking about trying to find a new way to find a new site and what it would look like and how we were going to sort of get up to speed and have a little more eye candy and appeal to everyone. We did a lot of research. It took a lot of time to find people that were willing to work with us, things, state contracts, budget constraints, how could we get the most easy usage, friendly, eye-appealing, all those came into play. And we finally found a vendor that we thought would work well with what we currently have in terms of trying to encompass what was there and then moving it over. So that was a big component as well. So we put together what we call the design team, which are principals, the superintendent, who else? Some of the tech people, the admins in each house, and asked them to take a look at some of the options of designs, and we sort of narrowed it down, and then we finally made an ultimate decision, and this is where we are. So in the last six months, we have been working feverishly to get all of the information that we currently have on our site, put it into our new site, add, enhance, and we thought that we'd give you a little sneak preview of what it looks like. It is not 100% done. It is a work in progress. It is largely finished in terms of moving content over and sort of setting up our bones and structure. And, you know, we thought we'd show you a couple of key pieces, and then if you had a couple of questions, we could do that. And we are targeting, yeah, the second week in August to go live and make the actual switch. One of the big pieces was to make it the most easy for teachers. We didn't want teachers to panic and say, "Oh, my gosh, a whole nother computer, a whole bunch more of professional development." This was done with the intention that it would be really very easy for them. Their stuff gets morphed over. We have a staff directory that shows the teacher, their website, their email, a picture, you know, right where they are. We can find them in the school that they're in or by grade. It's a searchable thing, so we hope you like it. So we'll show you a couple of things.
Do you want me to drive?
Yeah, go ahead. Okay. So if we go to our district, at the top, these were what we call channels, and these were all collectively decided by the design team. We, you know, basically brainstormed what we thought would be key and necessary. So the first thing I want to do, Karen, is just scroll to scroll down the main district page. So when you come up here and you scroll down, too fast?
A little too fast.
You see our mission and our vision, and then I just threw that up there, which would be akin to what you guys see right now when I change pictures or put up information right on the district page. A little note from the superintendent, just, I threw that up to say, you know, here's what we're doing. And we have some quick links, and these are obviously going very easily to where you want to go, but I thought, you know, if we pick, if you go to net, if you go to net, and it goes right to their website. If you go back, grab boosters, same thing. Mm-hmm. Pops right to their website. Pops right to their website. So we thought, these were things that we thought were the, what we have on there, the town of Nantucket, Department of Ed, Friends, really fast stuff that we think that staff and parents are going to want to go to right away. So then we could go up to our district. And each school, so we have the superintendent has his welcome letter on there, each principal on their school has their welcome letter, just like you would have on the current site. If you go up to our district, we thought maybe we'd show you the calendar. Yes. So first thing you see, we put up the current calendar. And I think it looks really nice and clean. And then we have the next one too, but then the refrigerator calendar, which I love this. You click on the fridge calendar? It's thinking. Is it loading? Yeah, it's thinking. It's a pretty big document, so it's taking a minute. Why did it not? Try again. Click again. It was there just before today. There we go. All you have to do is literally just scroll through our fridge calendar and with the mouse. You go right down and you just get, oops, you're going too fast. Yes, I'm going way too fast. If you just scroll down, you get page by page by page, just like you do on the fridge. I thought this was pretty terrific. Okay. And then I thought if we head to school committee, see some people we know. Yes, we have your pictures here. A little blur, just scroll down. I did poach Dr. Leprechaun off the hospital site, I hope that's okay. We put up everything on there we thought was important that is currently there, so we, if you go to policies, you'll have agendas and minutes, policies. This is a very big piece. I have to give a lot of credit to Joanne Johnson for helping us set this up. So you have that main page, just like we have it. You go to your policy, boom, this is what you're going to get. And I think it's great because we now have a little blurb about what each policy is. And then on the right-hand side, what we are ultimately going to do is we are going to put the PDF of the policy, so you just have to click it right away and it opens. And the rules and procedures. And the rules and procedures, if they have any. This is a work in progress. This is a huge amount of, the agendas and minutes and the policies is an enormous amount and it is all literally hen-pecking because you are literally moving everything and doing links and so it's a slow process. But I like it, I really like how, I think it's very clean and easy to read. You could go to the other thing that's up there and quickly, if you just hit the school committee, we have your evals up there, they're by year, same thing as the calendar. Click that. Yep. Pops right up. Okay. And then you can, so this is the current one, you can do it obviously by year. We have the same thing back onto the district for the supercontracts and, you know, each thing that you see, it's just an easier way to read it and move through. So departments, we thought we'd give you a preview of the art department because, oh. That's high school. We don't, okay, so we could go to athletics. So on athletics, there's a Twitter feed, you'll see a calendar. I guess there's no tweets at the moment going on. I know that the CPS principals page has tweets that are in there, contacts, and it's the same thing, it's by season, gives you all the coach information. The calendar, that is me pushing that on the main calendar. So on the district homepage, at the end, we can go back, you'll have three main calendar things that are important. And I essentially took over the calendar today and put up the school committee meeting and I drove it through everybody else's calendar, so I kind of forced the hand on that one. But every school will have what is important to the high school on that day or important to middle school or elementary school. Do you want to do the, go to another, to a school page? Or how about staff directory? Okay. Or you want to do that next? Yeah, no, staff directory, there we go. These are another sort of a nice feature that on every page, you have those at the bottom, that would be sort of the most frequently gone to links that we thought, everybody goes to the staff directory, everybody goes to the food services, everybody goes to Aspen, so we thought those were important. So this is the staff directory and if you find Alice Crowley, you search for her because we know she, so there she is. You want to know more about her? Yep, there's a little thing, math CPS, and then we can go to our website and there she is. And so any teacher that has a website, whether they're working on our current site or whether they have a Google or whether they've done something else, like Steve Laredo has done a fair amount on his website outside of here, those will always be linked, so no matter where you're going to go or what teacher, you'll go right to that, drives right to it. Maybe go to the high school? Yep. So there's the high school new picture. And if you just want to click through some of them? Art? Yeah, the art department. I thought this was great, if you just scroll a little bit. So the art department, we can put these up so you can see current art moving. I thought that was nice. And this is currently on this type of format we have on the building page, building project, so you can see a lot of the building project pictures. It's on the Vooc Tech, you can see a lot of there. You know, we were trying, it's not, every page is not like this necessarily. Just trying to, again, sneak peek, preview. So we can highlight, you know, if culinary goes again this year to the competition, we can highlight that, we can take photos, we could probably link in if they had any live streams. We have a live stream of the building project right now, currently, about whatever's happening on there, comes, pops right up. I think that was pretty much it. Do we have maybe CPS principal page? Because I know that Dr. Cohen has his Twitter feed up there. And is it right further? I'm trying. It's not going. It's not going as fast as I'm going. Oh, sorry, yeah. My bad. Quiet, no tweets during the evening, is that what happens? So this was pretty full today and so was athletics. So I just think it's, it looks really nice and again, it's each school is putting in some of their own information. A big shout-out to Linda Ferantella and to Brenda Knoll who have been helping with a lot of the backfill of all these kinds of things. NEES?
So if you hit translate right now, I think that's a...
Yep. What would you like to see? Pick it. Oops, sorry, I went too fast. You're highlighting too many. It's Google Translate, so it's not 100%, but it's pretty good. She's reading it.
No critiquing.
She already, she's... I mean, there's, pick a language. I think pretty much any language you can pick is there. Yeah, it's so, we like it. We hope you like it as well. We are still working on it and it does take, like I said, a lot of time, but it's fun to see it sort of move from when it was in the infancy stages to now where we really can maneuver through it. I like to watch how it's taking shape. Translate is blocking the...
Thank you so much. Any questions for anybody?
Yes, that's, exactly. We were thinking, it pops out. We welcome photos. If anybody has photos, please send them to me. I'm happy to share if they're, you know, school-oriented. I'm always looking for photos, so that would be nice to fill that out.
Logan, is it going to be you updating it?
I don't know.
Okay.
Well, the communications coordinators, as they stand, like every year, would be doing their schools.
Okay.
So we'll see how the rest of that plays out.
All right. Thank you.
Just so you know, Logan mentioned that it will be MPSK.org, but that will not happen until the launch. If you look at the top of the screen, that is the current URL for the website. You are welcome to. Go and use it whenever you want and we can send that to you if you want or you can write it down.
That's great.
So I would only point out that some browsers and some computers, I have trouble working through a particular browser and have to go to an alternative. So you may, you may or may not be able to get into...
Well, it's very Google-friendly. It's also what's called... It's friendly for everything, but Google, sorry. No, I am sorry. It seems to work in every way on Google, which we all seem to be using more and more and more and more. But the other thing that's important is that it does shrink to whatever device that you are on, so you will be seeing the same content on your phone and you will see the same thing on your iPad. Mr. Cozart is right that he, there's something funky in the browser that he was using, but when we move it out of that browser and go to a regular Google, it's coming in and we don't know if that's a glitch on our end or in school wires. This is if you had your phone, it will look like this. And you'll be able to get the same types of things. And you can scroll down. Yep, I didn't close it. It's not perfect right now. There we go. But it really does, I mean, it just zips it all right there and you still have the same amount of information. Tablet. And you can't do that on the current site, so. So, and then full, full site.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
We're so excited, thank you.
And I'm going to just open up his for him.
Thank you, Jeremiah. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The composition of the school committee has changed since I was here in October, so I'd like to personally welcome Mrs. Butler. I've had the pleasure of working with all three of her children, either a teacher or a coach, and I know that she's a strong advocate for children and for the public schools, so I'm very pleased to see her on the school committee now. 2015 and 2016, I feel, has been a year of great progress in the ELL department. I'll start with our enrollment. We actually gained 10 new students at the high school, but we lost eight, so the net gain was only two. I think the trend is that they are still coming, but not as rapidly as they have been, say, over the last three or four years. But we're still at a number that is, would have been unheard of five or six years ago, 262 students learning English in our schools. So who are ELLs? This is something out of our retail class, it just breaks them down into certain subgroups. There are more, but we get a lot of newcomers, students who arrive with little or no English at all three schools. We're also seeing a greater population of students with what they call limited or interrupted formal education. And I have a slide about just that later on in the, in the presentation. Long-term ELLs, often born in the United States, many of them born on Nantucket. They live in an environment that is predominantly their native language, the only time typically that they use English is at school, so that's what causes them, in my opinion, to take so long to work through the program. We're also now being, we're able to identify more English learners with special needs and Mrs. Miller's been great with our department this year. We've got several students who are both ELL and on IEP or 504 plans. It is difficult sometimes to identify learning disabilities in students with a very low proficiency in English, but our staff is so well-versed in English language acquisition that we're often able to spot issues long before they really are manifested in other areas. And then the other group is the gifted and talented students and we, we have several of those. I invited three of my former students tonight to answer questions that you may have. So there are officially 11 languages spoken by students at Nantucket Public Schools, two Creoles, so the patois and the Creole are more dialects than they are in language. I had to look up Uzbek. It's the language of Uzbekistan, it's a Turkic language written in a Latin script as opposed to a Cyrillic script perhaps or a... But what strikes me here is that there are about 415 bilingual students at Nantucket Public Schools. That is nearly one quarter of the student population. So while we only have 262 students learning English right now, one quarter of our population speaks more than one language and I think that's cause for celebration. The home language of the English learners is predominantly Spanish. We have 86% of our English learners have Spanish as a native language, second is Portuguese, Nepali, and Bulgarian in that order. So I thought I'd take a snapshot of the class of 2016. So the six students who were not in our ELL program in the high school either entered the ELL program in the elementary school or were never English learners to begin with, they just came from bilingual families. The five students who graduated this year who were ELLs, four of them entered in the high school, one entered in the middle school. But we're thrilled when students are able to pass their classes and matriculate despite not being fully proficient in, in English. That tells us we're doing a great job up at the high school in terms of making our content comprehensible to English learners. So just as a review, especially for Mrs. Butler who wasn't here in the fall, Massachusetts state law requires two basic components of language for, instruction for English learners. This is what the ELL teachers do down here. They deliver basic instruction in English language development, how to speak English. The rest of the teachers are now, the core academic teachers are now endorsed for their sheltered English instruction and the key here is to make the content comprehensible. So that sounds nice and neat, but it's very, it's very tricky because English learners arrive with different levels of readiness, different backgrounds, different experiences in formal education. But the key here is that both are required under Massachusetts state law, SEI and ESL. So I just want to recognize certain people who are here from the ELL staff. Would you call, would you stand up when I call your name? Henry O'Rourke, Hank is here from Holyoke Public Schools. He's come down and really done a great job at Nantucket High School this year. He spearheaded the ELL department up at the high school and I'm sure Dr. Bucky can tell you about all the great work he's done. We had Catherine Norton at the middle school. Catherine stepped into my role as the CPS ELL teacher and she's honestly making me look bad. She's doing such a great job. From the elementary school, we have Tina Fournier, who typically teaches the upper-level grades at NEES, and Nicole Ridge, who is primarily our kindergarten ELL teacher. Thank you all for coming and thank you for the good job that you're doing for our English learners. Also Patricia Harding is here and any of you who know Patricia and the work that she does at the elementary school know that we would be lost without her. We would absolutely be helpless in dealing with our Spanish-speaking families. And I also want to point out Eileen Tavares at the high school does a fantastic job, community outreach, helping ELL students day-to-day, translating important documents for us in administration and the staff, as well as attending meetings. She was with some students and some parents with me yesterday for FLEP meetings, she attends IEP meetings, and if you walk into the front office of the high school, you'll usually see several family members or students around Eileen. So we do a lot of different things in the ELL department, but the first thing that we do is we deliver ELL instruction in English acquisition and we differentiate it by WIDA proficiency level. So we'll try to keep beginners with beginners, intermediates together and then more advanced students in different classes. It looks different at all three schools. It's perhaps most neatly defined at the high school where we have an ELL 1, an ELL 2, and an ELL 3 class so that the students can progress through the various levels. The SIMS data verification, that may not seem like a big deal to you, but it's enormously important to the district in terms of the accuracy of our data. It helps Mr. Cozart and the rest of the administration with decisions that they make. It's our accountability to the state and it hasn't always been perfect, let's just say. So in the past couple of years, the staff and I have really worked hard, along with Joanne Johnson, to make sure that all the data elements, there are about six key data elements for each English language learner in SIMS, and I have to thank the staff and Joanne Johnson specifically for their help with the data verification and keeping it clean. We made a major investment in National Geographic curriculum materials. We bought textbooks, workbooks, readers, posters, all kinds of associated material for the elementary school. Those REACH books and curriculum materials are being used now K to 5 and after a year of working with them, I'm, I'm thinking that the elementary teachers are now really fully conversant with the material in there and able to, to sort of expand on it in the years to come. During our EWDs, we meet as a vertical team once a month, K to 12, so all of the ELL teachers meet and we were charged with picking an area or a problem of practice for our English learners and we identified student writing as the area in need of most work. So... So the elementary school uses the REACH curriculum in conjunction with the Teachers' College Program. Catherine and Hank have different programs that they use at the high school, but it's the primary focus, and we see this in our test results all across the state, as a matter of fact. The writing scores are the lowest for English learners, as it's one of the hardest domains to, to be able to synthesize. At the high school, our new ELL teacher Shawnee Webster co-taught biology this year, and that was fantastic, because she was able to help those Spanish-speaking freshmen and sophomore students who have to pass that biology MCAS exam, and we've all heard enough about that. But she will be teaching a section next year of biology that's going to be split in two. I'll talk a little bit about that a little bit later. Catherine and Tina Fournier and Shawnee again at the high school, and I went to the SLIF workshops that were presented by Matt Saul. Perhaps you have questions about that, but we're really trying to, to meet these learners in the middle. You know, when you think about it, these kids who come in with very little literacy skills, very little proficiency in English, it's a huge ask for them, on top of the cultural piece, to come all the way to where we're teaching in Nantucket Public Schools. So the SLIF, the SLIF model is what they call the mutually adaptive learning paradigm, where the, the teachers are really trying to meet them somewhere in the middle and not make them do all the work, because they may not be equipped to do it. Karen sort of glossed over the Access 2.0, but I have to thank her and her staff profusely for their help, all the way through the trainings. We spent several weeks as a department preparing for the Access, the training, the certification, the scheduling. Karen was fantastic, and I have to thank Linda Farantel at the elementary school, Jamie McCoy at the middle school, and Brenda Knoll at the high school. Without them, we would have been really, I don't know, not as well-prepared. So one other thing about that, she mentioned the Chromebooks. We were fortunate in that we already had Chromebooks in place. The Access test that we delivered this year, we had the kids take on the Chromebooks. I heard at my director's meetings that they had problems with other devices, and that the device of choice just happened to be the Chromebook. And we were already out ahead of that with our one-to-one initiative at the middle school and the use of Chromebooks by students all through the district. Upcoming this summer, we have secured an invitation to the first model curriculum workshop. Catherine, Nicole, and Shawnee Webster will be attending for four days with Matt Saul in August. ELL curriculum is a work in progress since the adoption of the WIDA standards in 2012 and the Common Core, so I'm looking really for these teachers to come back and help the rest of the staff write curriculum units for English learners aligned to both the Common Core and the WIDA standards. The WIDA model is another assessment tool. We give that sometimes twice a year, sometimes once. The Access test is given in January, so it's a real snapshot of the data halfway through the year. The WIDA model, we use as our initial assessment screener to determine the proficiency level of incoming students, and then we can also use it at the end of the year to measure interannual growth. We also use it sort of to triangulate Access data when it comes to placement decisions, and that'll help us decide which level to put the ELL student in for the following year. And then we gather all this information, and I just submitted it to Mr. Cozart the other day. This is a real, this is another major accomplishment, in my opinion, that we now have all data for all English learners for the past three years in one document. So that, I think, the data management, like I say, I owe a great thanks to tech department and the staff for their work in managing the data. So we're done with retail for, for the three-year Cohort 2 window. For those of you who don't know, Rethinking Equity in Teaching English Language Learners, it was a result of a lawsuit brought, a civil suit brought against the Boston Public Schools. The United States Department of Justice stepped in and determined that our teacher preparation was insufficient in Massachusetts, so the entire state had to teach these teachers. About 27,000 teachers earned their SEI endorsement in the past three years. So it was a major project, and we're fortunate that we're very close to the finish line. The last class met last weekend, and those teachers are just now waiting for their final grades and their certifications. So you can see we've got 91 core academic teachers now trained in the district as long as, as well as nine administrators, and these administrators use their training when they observe and evaluate SEI teachers. So as you saw in the earlier slide, SEI instruction is about making the content comprehensible. It's taught by a core academic teacher with a subject license and an SEI certification. This is really key here. The objectives and the, the language objectives in the assessment are aligned to the Common Core and to WIDA, but the key for SEI teachers is language objectives. Teachers are used to writing content objectives. What is it that the student needs to learn in this specific lesson? But the SEI endorsement allows them to associate language functions. What do the students need to do with the language in order to achieve the content objective? Again, it requires differentiation of instruction based on WIDA proficiency levels. Your instruction of a beginner is far different than your instruction of an advanced English learner. And it targets all four domains, and it happens when they are not in the English language development ESL classroom. This happens in the mainstream at the elementary school, in the content area classes at the secondary level. We qualify also for Title III funds through our population that has surpassed 100 English learners in the district. The primary objectives of the Title III initiative are to promote English language acquisition and academic achievement, and we are required to supplement what we do, not to supplant it. And that's pretty technical, but it's, it's very clear when you talk to the grants office. This year, 22 students in four sections at the elementary school and the middle school have attended after-school ELL tutoring. We primarily target the beginners or the newcomers to give them that extra boost that helps them acquire English more rapidly. Registration for summer classes is ongoing, so that's why we say approximately 40 students. We have about 40 registered right now. There will be four sections, three at the elementary and one at the middle school this summer for, again, beginner and newcomer English learners who, who need that extra boost. The other thing that Title III will help us pay for is professional development for teachers. They can go to workshops, they can go to the Matt Saul Conference, and like I said, the SLIF workshop. So a few changes are in the works for Nantucket Public Schools next year. There's some staff changes, but it's my hope that we can really sort of ramp up the implementation of the SEI initiative. Now that all the teachers are trained, now that they understand what's expected of them, I really want to make sure that teachers who haven't had retail as well as those who have get some more professional development in how to work with the WIDA standards. We talked about the model curriculum units that Catherine, Nicole, and Shawnee are going to this summer. I'm really looking forward to what they bring back in, in the end of July. And then SLIF programming. We have a great, a great nascent population of students with interrupted formal education that I'm hopeful that we can really target with remediation and extra support so that they can succeed in the mainstream. At the high school, there will be, like I said, Shawnee Webster will teach a biology class. She's an ELL teacher, and she's worked with the head of the Science Department, so she'll be teaching that introduction, sort of the first semester of, the first year of the biology class. Mark Rice, who is a duly-certified ELL and math teacher at the high school, will be teaching the first part of Introduction to Algebra, primarily for ELL students. And then there will also be a writing seminar class at the high school targeting ELL students, not your average English-speaking student. We lost our ELL TA, Marilyn Calderon, left in May, so we are still unsure how we're going to replace that position. We don't know if we're going to hire a full-time teacher or another TA. Then at the elementary school, one of our teachers moved to grade two, and I want to publicly thank Deb Davis for her years in service to the ELL department. She was a great asset to us down there, and I know she'll be a strong ally for ELL teachers in the grade-two team. And we are still going to hire an additional ELL teacher because of the growing population at the elementary school. About 160 ELLs at the elementary school, so they're still coming, and that's a, that's a large population down there. So we've heard recently from the Department of Ed that there will be new, new data record-keeping for SLIF students, and these are the criteria. And the first thing that I saw when I looked at this is the math. Many of our ELLs come to us many more than two years behind grade level. We're asking them to go into algebra, we're asking them to go into high-demand content classes at the high school without a lot of basic numeracy skills. So this is the primary one that I see. I would say more than 50% of our ELLs arrive at least two years behind in math. Some with language deficits or native language literacy that hasn't fully developed, but we're also seeing kids that have had traumatic experiences coming here, may have been out of school for some time. When I was an ELL teacher at the middle school, I had a girl in sixth grade who had been out of school since third grade. So you can imagine the deficit that puts her at when she tries to access the sixth-grade curriculum in a foreign language. So I'm hopeful that we can do some more work with SLIF programming next year. One of our best accomplishments this year, I think, is a greater involvement with the parents of our English learners. So here's a list of some of the topics that we discussed at our meetings this year. And we are also working with some other organizations here. Eileen and Patricia and I have been to a, a meeting a couple of weeks ago, and we're going next week to the Family and Children's Services to try to help them provide some more robust supports for English learners. But I've invited Maria Partita here tonight. She is the face of our Parent Advisory Council for English learners, and she's available here to answer any questions you may have. I know it says the ELL PAC update on the agenda for, for the school committee presentation, but she's here to answer any questions that you may have of her. This United States Hispanic Leadership Institute is an organization that promotes student involvement and actively taking responsibility within the, the ELL community and the Hispanic population specifically. This Saturday, there'll be another community event. We invited a Cuban guy here, and we had a great day planned back in October. He came all the way from the West Coast only to turn around in Hyannis because of the weather. So we're bringing him back on Saturday. We're having a potluck supper in the cafeteria and some cultural presentations as well. Maybe Maria can speak to that. I'll, I'll continue, and you can ask her questions at the end. Would that be best? So just as a review, before I go on, I wanted to show you the definitions that WIDA provides us for the various proficiency levels. And Dr. Lepre, to your point, we start our FLEPP conversations right about here. Mrs. Butler, FLEPP is formerly Limited English Proficiency. So those are the students that entered as ELLs, worked through the system, and learned enough English that they were able to exit the program and enter the mainstream. So if you see the definition, knows and uses social and academic language working with grade-level material. This is where kids exit the English language program. You can see the various stages of language acquisition according to WIDA through here, and you can see that it just builds in some academic language at the higher end of the levels threes and level fours. So when we see a level-one or level-two student, you know, minimal academic language or some general academic language. So it gives you a real idea of the, the sort of breadth of capabilities that are within the, the student body. So I wanted to show you how the levels are broken down at each school, and they call this the School Frequency Report, and this is just new data to us that we got about two weeks ago from the Access test that was administered in January. And I think the key here to the elementary school is the progression of students through the proficiency levels. If you look at the very low grades they're starting out, we get many newcomers in kindergarten. In first grade, they're moving up the proficiency continuum, and then as they approach the upper grades, they're mostly proficient over here in the high-level fours and level-fives. This year, we exited more students from the elementary school. We FLEPPed more of them than ever before, and that's a credit both to the ELL staff down there and to the mainstream teachers, because you can see clearly from this chart that these children are learning English. They're doing, you know, you can see they come in as beginners, and then, you know, what's that, 88% are up here at the top end by the time they're in fifth grade. At Cyrus Pierce, it's kind of a mixed bag, because we get students at various grade levels with various levels of English. The sixth graders obviously are a reflection of the program at the elementary school. We get several students that are at the high end of the proficiency continuum, and those students will stay up there on into seventh grade, but then we also get newcomers. And you can see we've got some brand newcomers who either arrived in seventh or eighth grade that are still low on the proficiency scale. Yes, sir?
I, I just would point out that those percentages are based on a much smaller population, so they can vary a great deal more at the middle school than they would at the elementary school. Just wanted to remind people.
Sure. I think the striking thing about the High School Frequency Report is how many students we have at Nantucket High School at a low level of English proficiency. I mean, you could draw a line right about here, and I would say, what's that, probably 60 or 70% of the ELLs in grades nine through 12 are not even close to exiting the program. So this is attributable to the students who've come with SLIF histories, the students who are recent arrivals, may have spent time, you know, out of school, may have had a very different formal education experience than we're used to, and I've brought some of my, my former students to answer your questions tonight. But if you look at the difference between this slide and, say, the elementary slide, you can see that the set of, you know, issues surrounding these students is completely different. These students come in, they have not, you know, gone through a school system in their native country, and they enter at the very beginning. Research has shown that students who are proficient by the end of kindergarten are practically always on track to be grade-level proficient. But you can see, this set of challenges at the elementary school is completely different than the set of challenges we have at the high school. And I just think that people really need to understand that our students are doing their best, but they are really at a disadvantage from day one. So I just wanted to make sure that, that that was clear, and I'm happy to answer any questions about that at the end of the presentation. So in response to Dr. Lepre's continued line of questioning, I went back and examined the data for the last three years of how many students have exited English Learner Services. Granted, this is a small sample size. There's a total of 31 students who have exited in the past three years, and at the top, these are the schools that they were attending at the time they FLEPPed, not where they entered school. So you can see that it's 4.3 years, it's a little shorter. This is a little misleading, I think, the high school, because those kids maybe came to us in middle school at a high-level proficiency, and I've got three of those students here tonight, so that may be them, just those three right there. And this, I just tried to break it down by native language. You would think maybe that Nepali, being a much different language than English, would present a greater set of challenges for those students. But again, Nepali students may have gone to school in English. They may have gone to private school. And Spanish could stand for a lot of different things, you know, parental level of literacy, median family income. These kind of things affect the time in the native, in the ELL program. So here is a graph of students who have exited the program and how it breaks down. This is years in the program, and this is number of students. So you can see our greatest number is here in the four to five range. You know, they say that it takes typically the student five to seven years to become fully proficient in English, so I think this is pretty accurate in terms of what we have here. You can see by the various schools how it breaks down, but I just wanted to sort of give you more information in your quest for, for FLEPP knowledge. So I, like I say, I brought Maria Partita here to answer any questions you may have about the Parent Advisory Council, and I'd like to present my three former students who were with me at the middle school. They all came at the middle school. In the front here is Catherine Rodriguez. She came to us in eighth grade, Catherine, and she is now a junior. She FLEPPed when she was a, in ninth grader. Brandon Menjivar and Jonathan Trecher are here. They came to me in middle school. They're currently sophomores, and I believe they exited the program last year. So they're available to take questions, as is Maria, if anyone or have questions for me, please.
I have a question.
How did I?
How do we address the issue of students that come in with either interrupted or education into the high school? How do we get those kids to be successful? Because that, to me, is the question. Should we have them do another couple of years to become more successful, or how do you handle that?
So that's the question. So that's the question of the hour, Tim. I think that's the $64,000 question. So in my opinion, we need to provide some remediation, especially in math. We can also give them extra doses of English. The beginners take now, the state reduced it from three classes to two a day. But there are measures we can take. We can set up a separate SLIF classroom for those newcomers or those SLIF students who have interrupted education. A lot of it has to do with cultural assimilation because they are not used to the way we do things at school. So like I said earlier, it's about the teacher-meeting-the-students part of the way. So there is remediation to do, but there's also some cultural work to do, I think.
But should we, for example, through the community school, have something set up for after their four years to continue along those same lines?
I think that's probably a good idea. I'm not certain how many kids would buy into that, though, honestly. By the time they're juniors and seniors in high school, they see dollar signs here on Nantucket in the, you know, in the job market. So it's easy for them to get a job and abandon their schooling.
But the problem is, is that it works on Nantucket.
Right.
Because all of our workers are somewhat privileged.
Right.
But on, in the real world, on the other side, with the sound, it gets a little trickier. And I just wonder if we tried to reach out to make sure that we kept them going, for example, through the community school. I mean, in the evenings or whatever, just to... Because that, to me, is the problematic problem. We're very, very successful at the other areas, but when we get the older kids in, they're sort of...
Right. Well, I've told you a number of times that it's very difficult to get them to come to after-school tutoring. It's difficult to get them to summer schools. They just have too many opportunities outside the school to keep coming back. So I understand, and I agree with your premise. The reality is that they don't want to come or they don't want to stay. So I emailed Lawrence Public Schools to find out about this vacation week. Haven't heard back from them, but we're trying, you know, to do our best in the classroom and provide them with access to the curriculum. But you're right, we need to do more, and I've addressed this with the administrative team. Mr. Cozart's aware of the SLIF workshops that our teachers have gone to. And now they're really more prepared to address the needs of these kids because, you're right, they do have needs that are different than other students.
Any other questions or comments?
Mm-hmm.
Jeremiah, thank you so much. I'm so happy to see your leadership in this for our district. So I want to thank you, and thank you to all of Steph, and thank you to the students for coming tonight, and to Maria for representing the PAC. I'm just so excited about the progress we've made. But I do have a couple of questions, and Jen reminded me of a suggestion I sent around to the committee for your consideration. And I can't recall which school district this was modeled in, but it was, and I'll find the article and send it to you.
Please do.
But it was a group of high school students who had FLEPPed, who were doing volunteer service hours and lower grades, and/or maybe with even students that are freshmen, if they're junior-seniors, helping them through the process. Because I think one of the things we struggle with as a community is those cultural barriers where we don't, we're not often very well-equipped within the district to meet the challenges that some of our students are facing. And if some of our students, maybe small at first, can be our representatives and help us help other students, I think that would be a really great... And I know we can give community service hours for that kind of volunteer work. So I think that is a program to consider, and I'll send that to you.
I think that's a great idea, and I think there are a lot of students at the high school and even at the middle and elementary school who'd be well-poised to step into those roles. Certainly, the arrival on Nantucket from a Latin American country where you don't speak the language is a traumatic experience.
That's right.
And you're right, we need to sort of foster the whole environment, not just the classroom.
And I'm going to channel Pauline Proch and a question that she asks. What can we do as a school committee and a sort of policymaking board to support your work?
Boy, that's a big one. That's a big one.
Pick me like one.
Yeah, right. Well, I just think your continued support and your support of our teachers is crucial. Certainly, our population is growing. It may have slowed down somewhat, but we are still growing the population. English learners are the only subpopulation in the United States whose number is continually increasing. So we're getting more kids. Certainly, these community events through the PAC, these are great ways to involve community members. But you're right, I love the idea of mentor-student mentors, and I think that the school committee, just to support the program and to be, you know, at some of these events would be fantastic.
Well, and just lastly, I think that, Maria, if we can have, and I don't know, maybe I haven't received them personally, but if we could have invitations or perhaps a committee member who wants to sit on the PAC board, I think we've done that with some of the other parent committees that are advisory committees, and it would be wonderful for us to, even if we can't make every one, at least have a presence there to hear the conversations or concerns that are being raised.
Absolutely. I'll invite you, I'll send an invitation.
Great. And some of the community events that are happening, just to make sure that we know about them so that we can meet those families. I think that's one of the challenges, I feel personally, is I'm not always connected to our ELL community, and I'm not always sure what the right way is to get involved and to help. So I'm leaning on the PAC for some guidance.
Well, this Saturday would be a great opportunity for them to come. Do you want to talk a little bit about that, Maria? Just a little bit about what's happening this Saturday?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you for inviting me.
Whatever. Here, sit by the microphone.
Okay. First of all, thank you so much, and I am very, very happy to know that we have our PAC. This is going to be our second year, I think, second. We're going to our third year of having the PAC, and this is very important. I was very, like, excited to know that we have it now. Thank you for being always there. Thank you for all the school, the principal, superintendent, and all the principals in the schools. And we are having us everything. Every, any organization, any group is growing. It starts from the bottom, from the little, and then hopefully, we're hoping to have more parents coming to the PAC meetings. We have a very small pair of parents coming to the meetings. We have to find out, figure out how to bring more people to come to the meetings, and we are very, very happy to hear that you guys are welcome, I mean, wanting to attend to the meetings. And we are also, I do know that our culture, our people have our, we're not different, different, but we have different ways to do things. And one of the things we are doing is try to figure out how to connect to them, how to bring them. And we have our own ways to do it. And we, right now, we feel like, should we do it our way? It's hard to get there. So we do want your support. And we are having it. We're having, we're getting a very good acceptance on a leader group that is coming up, the Nantucket Leadership and Diversity Group, and who is doing the event on June 25th. This Saturday, I have flyers for that, if anybody would like to have. And we're going to have music with the mariachi because, and folklore, professional dancers because, because that's the way we are, and that's how we're going to be able to bring people. And then when they're there, they'll listen to the information, and maybe someone will start saying, "Okay, I like it. If you keep doing, doing it like this, I would love to come." It's, in some way, it's kind of sad, but it's the way we are, we do it back home. And I do, excuse me?
I know. Who doesn't want to? Maria, I have a question for you. Would you say your parents that are attending the meetings, are they mostly elementary school, middle school, high school parents? Do you know, families that are attending the PAC meetings?
Well, there is, last meeting, we had...
Mostly elementary, I would say.
Elementary.
A lot of elementary parents.
Yeah. And I do want to mention, and I would love to have the kids come over because this is our new generation, our future parents, and they're going to learn, and they're going to start, you know, having kids, and they bring them to school, and they're going to be now in school. They're, they're going to know better than the parents that just came, and they never went to a school in the United States. I am, I was an ESL student, so I know what it feels to come here, know any English, sit there in a classroom, and don't understand a word. And I do appreciate when school district shows the care, that they do want to help. I mean, they're there. I like the idea that the school is preparing the teachers on how to talk to the kids or how to take care of the students that are just arriving. I'm very, very happy to hear that. And the other thing is, I do, as I said, these kids are new generations, and they are very successful kids. Probably back home, they had, they were one of the top kids in school. They come here and then they, because of the barrier of the language, it's like they're, they have to start from the bottom, even though they were the first top in the classroom back home. So these kids are showing how much they have. Now we have our first student committee, Hispanic. We want to see we can, you know, make it bigger, and we welcome any kids from Jamaica, from Brazil, and Nepal, anybody. But now, since I'm Hispanic, I think it's easier to go. But we're very, very open to have, and have many kids, since we make it very diverse because that's how we are in Nantucket.
Yeah, and I invited Brandon and Jonathan and Catherine in case you did have any questions for actual former limited English proficient students about their experience.
Mary, would you like to come down and tell us about your experiences?
While they're coming down, I just want to say, Maria, thank you for being the voice for the Hispanic community in the PAC organization. I also want to say that, you know, this is one of those opportunities, Mr. Cozart, where an email blast of that flyer should go out to everyone. We talk about, there's a diversity club, I know that my daughter happens to be a part of, but a lot of kids are a part of, but it's a community thing. So everyone in the community needs to know about it. Everyone needs to support, not just the school committee. The school committee is just a small, small portion. But many of us have Spanish-speaking friends and the like, and I think we need to show our love and support of them and be there and do what we can to help support the issues that are out there. Sometimes that helps them be a little bit braver to come forward and ask for the help they need and things like that. So I think that's something we should put out there. And thank you, Jeremiah, for the shout-out. Now, I was wondering if you could do that whole presentation again in Uzbek.
No, it's a short answer.
I do want to tell you that what's going, going to happen in the event Saturday, we're going to have from 5:00 to 9:00, it's going to be a four-hour event. And the first hour from 5:00 to 6:00 is going to be an expo where we invited most of the community organizations in the island to come and bring their information for our community. And also from off-island, there's going to be some organizations coming to give some information to the community. And during the day, the El Salvadorian Council and Mexico Council, they're going to bring their mobile council to give, like, birth certificates, passports, marriage certificate, like, any information, not the, like, the ID, that's a different process. They don't have the equipment to do it. But they're going to have a lot of information for parents that are here. We know lives here in Nantucket, we have to work, work, work to be able to eat, pay the rent and stuff. So sometimes to take a day off even, to go and bring the whole family to get a passport for their kids is very expensive. So bringing them here, it's, I think it's a good idea, and we're very happy that they're very...
I agree with you. It's a community event. We need to include as many people as we can and to, you know, to embrace the Hispanic community because it is a huge, as we saw, you know, we've got almost one quarter of the student population is bilingual. So thank you very much to Maria for her great work, and I just wonder if you guys have any questions for any of these fantastic former limited English proficient students?
I'm not going to let them off the hook.
All right.
I'm going to ask you a question. I've watched John on the soccer field, but what one thing helped you the most to acquire the English language?
Well, for me, it was a little bit challenging. Of course, I didn't know any English when I came here in eighth grade. But I feel like Mr. Spain, I couldn't be any more thankful because he was very welcoming and the environment that he created for me and for, like, all of us, I believe. It is just awesome, and I loved the, I loved having the opportunity to have him as my teacher and the motivation that he gave us, and yeah.
Well, thank you, Catherine. And that's very nice of you, but it's also the entire staff, Jonathan, Brandon.
But you came here not speaking any English, and right now, you're remarkable.
Remarkable.
Very impressive.
That's one of the things I was going to, sorry to interrupt, that sometimes when they come here and they have to take that test and cast our pack.
Don't get me started.
I know. But it is good that, I mean, we have to learn the language, and we have the right people.
Brandon, Jonathan, any answer to Mr. Cozart?
Yeah, I'll have to agree with Catherine. Having Mr. Spain as a teacher, like, the first day of school, I was completely lost. I had no clue what was going on, but he was there welcoming and explaining everything. And the way he taught the class is what, like, got us going. And back in El Salvador, I had taken some, like, English classes, but it wasn't much as much helpful because I'd, like, learn it, but I'd only, like, learn stuff in the classroom, and then outside the classroom, I'd speak Spanish all the time, so I wouldn't, like, be able to practice it. And once I got here, we, one of the great things he did that I think he helped, that helped us a lot, is that we weren't allowed to speak a single word in Spanish in his class, which is Warren. We, every, all English. And we'd be like, no, but like, we're all shy, and like, we can't, like, we don't know what we're saying and stuff. But he pressured us and he, like, forced us basically to speak English and not non-Spanish. And that's what helped a lot, the practice. To learn a language, you have to practice it. And forget about your other language for a little until you learn the other one. That's what helped me a lot, the practice. So I just have to thank him.
I think Mr. Spain made everything much easier. He kept us going and pressured us to keep learning and use it, like, outside of, like, his classroom and applying it to other stuff, like, social life and everything else we did. My part, I spoke Portuguese, and there was no one else who spoke Portuguese. So I didn't have anyone to talk to, so that kept me easier focused in English and just kind of make sure I learned it as fast as I could.
Well, it's really nice to hear this, you guys, but I think the same could be said of all ELL teachers. That's their job. They provide a welcoming environment. They challenge their students to acquire English, but they're also there to support them every time. So I didn't set them up for that. That wasn't a, that wasn't a...
All three of you were just really so impressive.
What happened with your accent? Were they called your accent?
Dr. Lepre?
I would ask, how did you find the other students? Let's say the American students, per se. As a re, did they, did you find acceptance? Did you find you were isolated or...?
I, I found acceptance in, like, most of my friend, well, because the reason because of I found acceptance in them was because when I came here, the population, the Hispanic population in school was very small. And I came to middle school in seventh grade. Yeah, seventh grade. And it was, the only person I knew who, like, spoke, like, Spanish was Catherine and Christian and others, and so then, as I was learning English, I, like, saw, like, a bunch of kids, and I played, like, soccer and, like, started to, like, hang out with them a lot. So I started to, like, to, like, get along with, like, the American community, as you can say, and with basically everyone. So there was some acceptance there. Like, I've never, I never heard a racist comment, like, that was serious to me.
I feel like when I moved here, at first it was very lonely, I couldn't speak the language. But I kind of wanted to make friends, I wanted to experience everything that everyone else experienced. And so I tried to get involved with everything, so I joined soccer team and many other activities that helped me get through it.
Yeah, of course, it was challenging, but it just worked hard for it, and I didn't concentrate on, like, finding friends or being accepted. I just put all my mind into learning. I just put all my mind into learning English and now I feel like that's what's more important. Like feeling isolated, that will not help you at all. So, I didn't really mind that, so I just.
It helps when you're nice kids and you make friends easily, Jonathan, these guys. Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
Before they finish, I just want to add one thing that Ms. Maria is forgetting. The Cuban guy is part of the answer they make about what's going to happen with these students when finished twelfth grade. This guy is a motivator speaker and he wants to work with the parents and with the students to see them finish high school. It's not like SABO and that, you know, you have to do more things and outside is a lot of things you can do for. And the Cuban guy is this guy to go to church all day, all this possible.
Yeah, one of the things that we do need here in the island with our kids, and all the kids in school, of course, I heard there was a motivator speaker that came to talk about bullying and it was great. But we're bringing this guy that is going to speak to them in their own language and is going to try to, you know, get, inspire them. And there's a lot of kids, these kids right here are very talented, successful already, but there's other kids that sit in the back and they just, it doesn't look, it looks like they don't care, but they do. But they might feel like they have so much other stuff back home in their heads with the language and other things that they do need that little push.
Thank you, Maria.
Thank you. Thank you, Catherine.
All right, any comments from the public at this time? No comments. Okay, that's a good thing. Moving on to discussion and votes to be taken. May I have a motion to approve the gift donation from Ahold Financial Services Stop &amp; Shop A+ Rewards to Nantucket Elementary School in the amount of $2,512.98, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the gift donation from Funding Factory Ink Cartridge Recycling Program to Nantucket Elementary School in the amount of $1,091.82?
No approval.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the gift donation from Ahold Financial Services Stop &amp; Shop A+ Rewards to Nantucket High School in the amount of $235.44?
May I make a comment?
Sure.
The elementary school parents are smoking the high school.
I know, absolutely.
Parents volunteer, rocks this thing.
Wow. That's fantastic.
Yeah, nicely done. Motion to approve.
Second, anyone?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the gift donation from Target Take Charge of Education to Nantucket High School in the amount of $25.18?
No approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, may I have a motion to approve the gift donation from Nantucket Arts Council to the Nantucket High School Agency Account to be applied to the Art Department in the amount of $5,000?
Wow.
Very generous. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the gift donation from the Nantucket Conservation Foundation to the Nantucket High School Agency Account to be applied to the Science Department in the amount of $300?
No approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, may I have a motion to approve the Evelyn McLaughlin and Miriam Congdon Scholarships for 2016? Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to congratulate everybody who was awarded one of these scholarships. We're a very lucky community.
When will they be published, ask me?
John, I'm not sure when those go out, but.
This week.
Yeah, this week's paper, maybe.
And Mike, could you remind us of the total number? I know it was in the high school graduation materials, but the total number of scholarships awarded to both current graduates and alumni?
The overall figure?
Yeah, it was like six hundred?
Yeah, I would say it's upwards of six, $700,000.
It's amazing.
But there are also more scholarships that are coming too, because the town holds certain scholarships and those don't typically go out until July. So, we have such a generous community, it's really heartwarming.
Both for our graduates and our alumni. I'm so impressed. Thank you.
It's amazing, just these two scholarships alone, $20,000 for our students. It's incredible. May I have a motion to approve the Nantucket Community School lease extension with remain for 56 Center Street?
No approval.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm going to interject now.
I was going to ask for clarification.
To the chair, we are not going to vote on the MOU with the Town of Nantucket for the Community Recreation Program just yet, because we don't have a final draft.
Perfect, thank you. I had a question mark there.
Yep.
So, thank you. And everybody had the policy, the amended policy for school cameras that you were able to review, and we didn't have any questions. So, may I have a motion to approve the new policy? ECAF, security cameras in schools?
No approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The transfers and invoices, a motion to approve?
So, move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the June 7th, 2016 meeting minutes?
No approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Superintendent's report.
Well, thank you. I think it's not listed, but I'd first like to thank Karen and Jeremiah. I echo the comments from the school committee. You know, I think about technology and just in the time that I've been here, I've seen it quadruple, the number of devices and technology. And of course, as Karen said, you have to maintain the infrastructure to make sure that that's all working. There's nothing more frustrating than having technology and not being able to access it. And I think probably many of us have been in that situation in one place or another. And so, kudos again to the entire tech team for keeping us afloat. You know, Jeremiah, thank you so much. That was so informative. And I think, again, ELL services from, you know, in the window that I've watched it, the numbers have challenged us, but thanks to the school committee and the town appropriation, you know, we've added staff every year and we've added leadership, which I think is paying dividends and you can see that. We know our ELL students, we know the data. It's at our fingertips and just have so much more information that informs our instruction. So, and then, you know, those 90-plus teachers and nine administrators, much of that instruction has been to Jeremiah's credit. And having gone through the class myself, it was terrific and certainly makes a difference in the way that I approach our work. So, and I think I can speak for the administrative team that would say the same. The other thing I wanted to add today is a thank you to Torrance Lewis and Abby LaRoe, who are leaving our district for other opportunities and didn't want to let this last meeting go by without thanking them for their good work and wishing them the very best.
Absolutely. Thank you, Torrance.
So, wellness report. The wellness group has been working, we've met two or three times this year. They include the physical education and health teachers in the district, the school nurses, Linda Peterson, food service. And so, we've had a lot of people working on it. What we're working on right now is looking at not so much the policy, which is written by the school committee, but the rules and procedures that go along with those policies needed to be updated and haven't been updated for some time. There's a five-page document on our website, if you were to go into it, and it covers who should be on the team, areas like nutritional quality, and we're updating all of the recommended daily allowance, which has changed in the last few years, breakfast programs, free and reduced meals, the qualifications of school staff, the beverages and foods that we sell in vending machines are governed by this. And all of these things, if you've been a student in our schools or if you're a parent in our, or staff member in our schools, you will have seen the changes just through watching the changes in the vending machines. You, the choices now are water and maybe flavored water, but no Coca-Cola, Pepsi, you know, the high calorie and fruit and sugar. And then nutrition education, we're changing that. The marketing, the food marketing in schools. And we need to update staff wellness piece, because we now have the cardio room that is the fitness room in the high school that's used by a lot of staff members. And of course, the pool. So, there are a lot of things, you know, recess is spoken to in that document and making sure that recess is not used, or the lack of recess is not used as a punishment in our schools. And so, there's a lot going on. We'll be bringing that new document to the school committee to look at when we finish.
And I'm sorry, Mike, did you say that that was the wellness committee or is that part of the policy?
That's, the wellness committee is the group that's doing the rules and procedures.
I see.
So, they're not touching the policy, the two-page policy piece, but they are revamping that other. So, you know, a lot going on behind the scenes. On our website, if you click on wellness on the left-hand side, you will come to a link and a webpage that was created by Bonnie Ray. That is incredible with what it provides for parents. If there's, you know, if there are no other things that you connect to, and I think that there are many that you should as a parent, that resource puts so many things at your fingertips for health and wellness issues. It's really a tremendous website. So, lots of good things going on there. And then, the last piece is on the horizon. I did at Chairwoman Iller's insistence, decrease the agenda for tonight and I pushed off the athletic, no rightly so, I pushed off the athletic update to next meeting. So, it was a good thing that we did that. And we'll have the athletic report. I'm not sure that we will have the advanced placement results by then. That typically comes in later July. And then, we'll start to get into the remaining class funds to net. I'm not sure that we will have a presentation on health benefits. That is something that we had talked about and the Town of Nantucket would really rather have, the HR would rather have people come to them and rather than make a presentation at a school committee meeting. And so, we're in pretty good shape. I think you've got to decide about whether you want to have a July 5th meeting or whether you're going to have one or two meetings in July, and you may want to speak to that, Jen.
Well, if everyone's here, I would like to have a July 5th meeting and then talk about possibly a retreat later in the month to talk about strategic planning. Any questions?
The 5th is a Tuesday, so if you're all going to be here.
I would like to continue with the July 5th meeting.
Okay.
And would that follow, whether we do the workshop or not, that we would just meet the first Tuesday in August as well? Have one August meeting?
I think you would probably have two August meetings, because it starts to fill up with everything from, you know, handbooks and goals and all of those sorts of things. The fourth quarter budget update is in August, so it can get to be a little bit longer if you try to keep it to one.
Jen, may I ask one question? Mike, when you're working on the wellness update with that team, I'm not sure where you're at with this, but could we ask you to consider students being able to have access to snacks or foods if they have an early lunch at 10:30 a.m.?
Yeah, you can. I think that, I'm going to guess that that is often done, but we do have some early lunches at the, particularly at the high school. When we, when we go, when we split the elementary school into primary and intermediate, that should make it easier for those children. But certainly for next year, when we may be at the highest number ever at the high school, it's pretty tough.
Just some consideration for being able to have access to food. I think that whether you have issues or not, your blood sugar drops and, you know, if you've eaten breakfast at 7:00 or 7:30, lunch at 10:30 is really just a snack. So, by 12:30, 1:00, I think students are hungry again. So, just as part of your conversation.
Yep.
And also for a late lunch too, it makes sense to have a snack between.
Or just, you know, permission to have access to it. I don't know what the rule is. And then, I don't, I just wanted to acknowledge the website work and I think it's so fantastic. I'm so excited. And I didn't know if the district goals for the school committee were a part of our dropdown page. I didn't see it long enough to.
The goals are actually under the district page. There are all there, so if you guys.
Perfect. Great.
Yeah, that was terrific and I should have acknowledged that as well, because there's so much work behind the scenes. You have, you have no idea when you're trying to transfer that amount of data from one website to another. So, I give the whole group and Logan's been an integral part of that.
But I also want to acknowledge keeping that a priority, given all of the other demands that have been going on, that you were able to keep that going, because I think that initiative is so paramount to all of the other initiatives we're doing. So, thank you to everyone for that.
Thank you.
Do you want to mention our policy meeting and how we're?
Sure. We had a policy task force this morning, as a matter of fact, and met and talked about the specific request that came to us for the naming of the elementary school gym after Sally Roberts. And the first thing that we did was sort of put that specific request aside and say, what are the criteria that we want to consider whenever any request like that is made? Whether it's for a building or a space inside the building or a field, those are the areas that typically are requested. And we came up with three fairly simple criteria. One, of course, is the impact that the name, a person in this case, had on the district's children. That should be first and foremost. And then, an appropriate length of service, although we did not identify what appropriate would be, because we wanted to leave some flexibility. Somebody might have an amazing impact in a very short time, but that was part of the criteria. And then, we felt that an administrator and a colleague should probably write a li- And then, we felt that a administrator and a colleague should probably write a letter of recommendation in support of any request. And in the case of Sally Roberts, we've already asked and understand that those will be forthcoming. So, we would, you know, hope that at the July meeting, a recommendation could come from the committee for your action. Is that?
That's right. And I spoke to Nate today as well to let him know that we were working on this. Thank you. Anything else?
Before we end, I just want to make sure, I remind everyone, it's the first fair for ELL.
Thank you.
It's the first one, so I think everyone should be in 100% attendance and support. It's the first one.
Thank you, Zona. Thank you very much.
And there's great food, there's always great food.
That's the way to my heart. Party and food.
Thank you.
And if anybody's wondering why Mr. Horton and Mrs. Slate are dressed the way that they are, they came straight from the fifth grade basketball game against the staff and I'm guessing, I'm guessing and hoping that the students won once again.
They did win.
Amazing.
Good.
That's great.
Even with your height.
Best basketball game on the island.
It is, for sure. Thank you, thank you so much. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out.